Welcome all to the proper part of the meeting. The ecologies, I've got them from Hillary Calvert as noted, also Thompson, who is no longer known, and possible early departure of councillor Hawkins. I'll move the seconded councillor Lord. All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry, thank you. I note the, sorry, confirmation of agenda. Any changes to that? Thank you. I'll move the confirmation agenda, seconded councillor Lord. All in favour, please say aye. Against Kerry, thank you. Declarational interest, I just note that for your attention. On to number five. Bruce, welcome. Mr Hall. Four, yeah, number four, sorry. This hall road named after you Doug, or was it? No, it's not. Bruce, would you like to talk to your report?
Fairly straightforward, although it is a combination of people's names, which is possibly a little odd, but it is a private way, so there has been precedents in the past with private ways that the name doesn't quite strictly meet the policy. Apart from that, fairly straightforward.
Good, councillor McTavish.
Thank you. Just a query, you'll have to refresh my memory, in the event that the committee doesn't find this acceptable, you would need a resolution which said, go back and have a further discussion with the...
In the first instance, yes.
Okay, well, I'm happy to move in that direction.
And the chairman of the next. Councillor Staines?
Maybe I'm getting grumpy in my old age, but we seem to have quite a number of requests for naming of roads that do not comply with the policy that we put in place. In your opinion, is the policy a sound policy, given that we continually seem to break it, i.e. we might want to review that policy? Or what is it that we're doing wrong, that we have a policy and if we regularly don't follow it?
I think the policy is reasonably good. The guidelines that go with it are potentially where they could be improved, and I have already held discussions with my manager about doing that. I think it's just the way you word things to discourage this sort of thing.
So you would recommend us doing a review of, or at least having staff do a review of the guidelines for us to then endorse?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any, our councillor Hawkins?
Thank you. The alternative name that is proposed, and is always proposed in these situations, is another one coming later. Is it unusual, I mean, do you have to accept the alternative name particularly in the instance when it's essentially an anagram of the proposed name? Because we don't, I can't imagine how this would be any more or less palatable to anybody than to propose one.
I do, I hold discussions with these people, and I try and point them in the right direction. At the end of the day, if this is what they've proposed, that's kind of where I, I have to go with what they've given us.
So neither Ken Ross or Ross Ken were the direction you were guiding them in?
I would have preferred not, but, you know, we offer the road naming to the developer as courtesy, and this is what they've given us.
Councillor Noon?
Thanks, Mayor of the Chief. It's going to be a comment and a question. The community board obviously considered this, and under the guidelines, under B, historic person or event, essentially the board felt comfortable recommending that this particular person has a long association with the area, and that's how we felt we could get it through the hoops and hurdles. And I suppose the question, the question for Bruce is around the proposed naming of new subdivisions, providing they meet one of the criteria in some form. Is that adequate in terms of administrating the policy, in your view?
On the whole, I think it is. It's just perhaps having more clarity around what is acceptable and what isn't. In this circumstance, it's a portmanteau word. Do we want to find a way to discourage that sort of thing?
Any other questions? I've questioned. I'm surprised that Roskin Lane is seen as too similar to Ruskin Terrace. Is that out of Port Harms as well?
Ruskin Terrace is Caversham.
Caversham, so, but you see, Ken Ross for me was really like Glen Ross, which we have as well, and I'm surprised that that similarity hasn't triggered the same response from you.
Yeah, I picked up on that one.
Thank you. I suspect that there's a motion about, there's no other questions? A motion from councillor McTavish, would you like to speak to it? I mean, just talk, just talk us through it.
It's simply that the committee declined to name the new private way, Ken Ross Lane, given its inconsistency with the road naming policy, and request that staff further engage with the developer to find a name that is consistent.
Mayor of the Chief, and I just foreshadow that I will move if that one fails, the recommendation set out on the audit paper.
We've got a second for this one, councillor Hawkins? Any, would you like to speak to your...
Look, just briefly, for me, it's not about this particular instance, I think clearly the members of the community that this name refers to have made a contribution there, and I don't have anything against that or the community board's position, but my view and my consistent view on these things has been that we need to be taking a line on our policy, which means that our policy actually means something, and to date we have not done that, and I think as, I mean, I have a high level of frustration around that. Either we have a policy and we stick to it, or we get rid of the policy. So if there is a view around this table that this should, this is an appropriate name, then, well, I think we need to review our policy, not just the guidelines associated with it. So I hope that we will stick to our policy, and that is why I'm moving this.
Thank you. Councillor Staines? Sorry, do you want to talk to your...
I, either as a consequential motion to this one, or if the movers and seconders are comfortable, I think we should have something that says that we ask staff to review the guidelines associated with the naming policy, to make those guidelines clearer to applicants, and submit that back to the committee for approval.
Are you happy for that to be part of that motion? You are happy with that to be amended? That's an amendment to this motion? That's okay? Are you going to have the word there? Take it as given. Councillor Noon?
Look, I don't support this approach. One of the good things, and you've heard me say this before, about this city, is it's a large city that has community boards doing really good work despite what one or two of us around the table may think before he gets a chance to say it. The six boards are very passionate about their patch, and they go into bat for their local community. They have good connections at a grassroots level, far better than any of us. The proposal in front of us that I support on the audit paper is a proposal from the developer. The proposal also is supported by the community board, and it's supported by the community board simply because this family have a very good reputation in the community, they've been involved, you would have seen the notes, for a long period of time, in particular with two organisations, but I know for a fact they do lots of other things within the community that goes under the radar from a council point of view. They are extremely well respected in the community, and I think we should be giving them some respect here in light of meeting their proposed name. With regards to the policy, if I read attachment one, it says extracts from road name policy and road name guidelines, the word guidelines is used. Then if you drop down to the second paragraph, extracts from road naming guidelines. If we had a policy that was black and white, we wouldn't be sitting around here, we mustn't have stayed at home, because the staff would be able to implement it if it's black and white. And once again, as I say, the good thing about the city is it's very diverse, and it's got communities in it that are really passionate and want to see as the city goes ahead and advances in the future. It has, it recognises these good people that have done a lot of things for their local community, simple as that. But I understand councillor McTavish's point of view from a generic point of view, but in front of us today is a request from a developer, a request from a community part of their city.
Thank you. Councillor Bazet?
Yeah, I support all of what councillor Noon said. I can't support this resolution. But the second bit, the staff are referring to no road naming policy, I can go along with that, but I suspect that Mr Hall will come back with something pretty well what we've got at the moment. I don't believe that the road naming policy can be absolute, and I also believe that there's got to be opportunity for people who have some original ideas to come forward with some particular name for an area that they, that they might want to name. So I'll vote in the answer, I think the name was Ken Ross Lane doesn't particularly excite me. I understand why they've gone with that, and I take on board the comments that councillor Noon has made about the community board being involved and recognising the population that these people remain within the area that they live, and I think that should be recognised as well. And these things will come up all the time, there is no policy that we could write that is going to be absolutely hard notice about some decision, as once again councillor Noon has said. If we did that, we wouldn't need to be sitting around making decisions. So I'll be voting in the answer, I'll be watching councillor Hawkins support me. If councillor Staines wants to put in his part of the resolution, start the house to review the road naming policy, I can support that, but I'd be very surprised if it came there. Too much change from what we've got at the moment. I think we've got to allow some degree of flexibility, so I'll be voting in the answer.
Any other speakers to this motion? Miss, sorry.
I'm in two minds about this, but I am frustrated that we keep coming to these meetings and wasting hours on trivia. There's no need to have a policy that's black and white, we could just give, have a robust policy and give the staff discretion to do what they're good at. So I'll be voting for this to make a point. I'm sick of coming here and sitting around here as I say, wasting time on trivia when it could be sorted out by some very able staff under a decent policy.
Any further speakers? Would you like to write a reply?
Briefly, Mayor of the Chief, I want to reinforce again that this isn't for me about this particular situation, it's because there is a need for us to stick to policy, and we have not been doing that, and it's because of that that developers are getting inconsistent messages about what is and what is not appropriate. So if we wish to have a policy as a city about what is appropriate as road names, then we need to stick to that as a council in order to send consistent messages about what is appropriate, and we haven't been doing that today, and my view is that we need to be doing that if we are to stop wasting everybody's time, so, including staff's time, because the amount of time that staff have been put into negotiating around the policy with developers and with members of the community, it is important that we, that we do so. If the view of the committee is such that any name is appropriate, and we shouldn't be wasting staff's time having a policy, then by all means vote against this, and perhaps we can absolve ourselves of that whole process by getting rid of the policy. But my view is that we have a policy, it's a good policy, we need to be sticking to it in order to send people a consistent message.
Thank you. Now going to put the motion, I'm going to do it in two parts, because I think it makes sense and I've got advice, but if the first one fails, I'm happy to take the, we can take the second one, or we can do the consequential motion and then the second one.
Can I just suggest we have a division on the first one, just so that, just to save time?
If you've voted, I'll do it. Division, thank you.
I was only the second time in my career.
Councillor Fitzpatrick? Councillor Bazet?
No.
Worship?
Aye.
Councillor Hall?
This is my side.
Councillor Hawkins?
Aye.
Councillor Lord?
Aye.
Councillor McTavish?
Aye.
Councillor Noon?
No.
Councillor Pete?
Aye.
Councillor Staines?
Aye.
Councillor Lambus?
No.
Councillor Wiley?
No.
Councillor Wilson?
Aye.
Status quo is it's not named at the moment, and I've been voted to support it. Yeah, I think that's where I have to go. I'm not sure how that... Yeah, so that is passed. Second motion, oh, you don't want to push it on that one, I presume? That's on there?
No, no, I just understand you voted in favour?
Aye, in favour, because it's status quo.
So the motion is passed?
Passed, yes, sorry, apologies.
You voted in favour, that's not a vote in line with the status quo, the status quo is not...
That is...
The street is currently not named, so voting for the status quo would maybe have to oppose that one.
That says...
Well, there is no name. It's going to stay unnamed.
I'm afraid I don't have to, but that's why I am, and have a debate and discuss later. I'm now going to put motion two.
Let's be quite clear, the motion's been passed.
First one has, yeah, and we're now going to do the second one. Any discussion or further? We've already discussed enough, I'll put the motion all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Kerry? Thank you. I have applied, naming a new private way of Eglinton Road, John Eden. Mr Hall, you're staying on this one? Mr Hall? Thank you. Any questions of staff? Anything else you'd like to add to your report, Bruce?
I'm happy to move to the motion.
Motion, seconded councillor Hawkins, was any other people... Do you want to speak to your motion?
Certainly.
Any discussion? I have to put the motion, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry? Thank you. That one looks good. Road stopping and legalization of Methston Road. Robert John? Would you, and Jean? Would you like to speak to your report at all, gentlemen? Any questions of staff? Got a motion? You are happy to move the motion? Movements? A seconded?
A question.
Oh, you had a question, sorry.
I know, I didn't play.
Okay.
Just through the chair, what would happen if we didn't stop the road today?
The applicant would have to go back to the drawing board. I don't know the answer to that one.
Right.
The road would not be stopped.
Thank you. So motion, any seconded? That's what we did together, that's all right then. Councillor Noon? Lord and Noon? Any, do you want to speak to it? Councillor Lambus?
I'm wondering on page 6.2, why under the recommendation we've got C, that the applicant meets all legal requirements of the Public Works Act 1981. If we're going to start making recommendations that applicants meet the legal requirements of one act, surely shouldn't we list all the other acts that are involved? I mean, why is it even there?
May I have a question for the staff?
Whoever put it there?
The purpose for including that is not a requirement to comply with the law, but there are a number of tasks that are required to be undertaken under the Public Works Act, and that comes at a cost, at a legal consulting costs and survey costs, and that the purpose of that statement is to make it clear that this is in the favour of the applicant, not the favour of the council, so therefore we're expecting the applicant to carry all costs for all tasks to be undertaken under the Public Works Act.
So it could have read in fact that the applicant meets all legal requirements and costs?
I believe the costs are recovered by...
B.
So why do we need C?
That C includes tasks, which includes things like notifications to the Minister of Land and Survey.
Okay, thanks for that.
Any wish, anyone want to debate? I'm going to put the motion all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against Kerry? Thank you.
Staines?
Number seven, beach access track warranty. I've had a resolution indicated to me already just during the public forum. Councillor Staines, I'm not sure what this is.
Happy to second.
Happy to second. Sorry, normally we give you talk to your report, which we had well talked to us already. Do you want to add anything, gentlemen?
Yes, I'll speak very briefly to the report. You've received a report in front of you, it is rather a brief summary of obviously quite a long history, it prevents a lot of work that's gone into that. You've heard before from people wanting the track to be kept open, we have also received 18 letters from people wishing the track to be kept closed, petition by 141 people in the community wanting it to be kept closed, and another 18 letters from people wanting it to be kept open, sorry, to be reopened to traffic. There is a safety report at the end of the report, that is not based on whims or lack of site visit, it is based on people going to the site, measuring up, it is based on information provided to us by the people that live there, it's based on photos of tracks of people driving on the reserve in manners not consistent with dropping off boats. We have records of camper vans getting stuck on the track, so it's certainly not based on a whim, there is actually quite a lot of detail in behind that safety report. We've acknowledged that the correct process was not followed to get us to this point. The approach we've taken is to say that is in the past, what is the best step, what's the best approach to take for dealing with this matter into the future? And number one concern, of course, is safety, that we must go by the best professional safety advice that we receive, that has been adequately reviewed and commented on by the police and the Ministry of Transport. So what we've provided is, what we propose is what we believe is the most reasonable way forward under the circumstances, and the recommendation is not to close the track, it's the recommendation is to look at safely reopening the track, and only to consider permanently closing it if that is not feasible as a last resort, but in the interim, our key concern is to make sure that the safety needs of the public are met.
Thank you. Any other comments from Robert John again? No. Councillor Lambus?
You acknowledged that the correct process wasn't followed in the past, the process that you're now undertaking, I take it will be under section 353 with a general safety provision?
No, that's incorrect. Under 342 and Schedule 10 of the Local Government Act, we are allowed to temporarily close the road following a certain process, that is this process that's proposed here, so it would be a temporary closure, which means that it cannot be kept permanently closed under that, using Schedule 10 for safety reasons.
So how long is temporary?
That is, so that is until either the track is safely reopened, or a council decision is made to permanently close it.
So are we talking weeks or months, or what do you anticipate in terms of the time that it's going to be temporary closed?
The first stage is to look at what safety improvements need to be made in order for us to be comfortable that it is safe to reopen the track for all use, and then to carry out some works to do, which I would consider to take a few months.
So we'll be revisiting this in a few months if the recommendation that you have below applies?
That's correct.
Would it not be equally useful to actually open the road and then look at what the actual use is going to be? Because trying to anticipate safety issues when a road actually isn't opened and it's been illegally closed is surely fraught. I mean, you can't, it's like, you know, shutting off a section of the one-way street system and then trying to establish what the safety issues are on it. Wouldn't it be better to open the road and then establish what the safety issues are?
We have to go by the best professional advice that we're given, and that is, that advice is that it's not safe to open it in the current state, and that works would be required to make it safe to reopen.
And where does that professional advice come from?
I think one of the key things that I'd just like to highlight, if you look at bigger page, given on five, the photo at the bottom there, now what it shows is quite a steep track and what we've left to appreciate, if you look at also the top photo, you can see where the rocks are relative to the edge of the road. Now, a vehicle coming up there at the angle that they come up, they're going to have great difficulty seeing pedestrians coming towards them and vice versa. That's probably one of the key things, it's not so much have there been crashes, it's about risk, and it's just making sure that that track is organised in such a way that if it is reopened, it's safe for all potential users.
So are you suggesting that with reasonable visibility, I think Muddon suggested it was 65 metres, or 63 at a minimum, and a 15 kilometre limit on speed, that is actually a safety issue there?
It's not so much the visibility when a vehicle has got, say, just up past the rocks looking down bank and bay, it's actually seeing and approaching pedestrians who is on that side of the road and vice versa.
At 15 kilometres an hour?
No, 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 you look here, we're not talking about people coming around here, it's someone coming up here, and then a pedestrian coming along here, and if you look at the bottom photo, you can just see the top of the fence, and it can be quite difficult to see a pedestrian yourselves. How will you organise that in such a way? There are reports, I mean, I'm in neither camp, but there were reports previously from some residents here, that when it was opened, the vehicles were coming up there quite fast, and there were potential conflicts. So the idea is to organise it so it is safe and minimise that risk.
Does the city council own sufficient land either side to increase the sightline so that it could be safe? Is that, was that all within road reserve?
I believe there is, or if that is in road reserve.
So what you're saying in terms of a safety issue could be mitigated simply by removing some of the vegetation either side, or recontering the top end of the track?
Well, what it could actually, it may involve actually reshaping the track in such a way so that when a vehicle comes up to the top of the track, they become level as well, so they can see up and down the road, and also organise it in such a way that if a vehicle is coming up, there's a separate pedestrian to go down, so we actually separate those two movements completely.
Have you got any idea what kind of cost might be involved, and what you're suggesting?
I myself have not done a cost to date.
Okay. Do you think that given that it is a legal road, that we have any obligation to actually involve ourselves in the kind of costs that you've just suggested?
Well, I suppose if you look, if you look in terms of our mine improvements programme and the road safety action plan, this would be way down the list, relative to other projects.
Sorry, it's down the list because it's not that much of a safety issue, or because it's a fairly cheap thing to do?
Well, every project, there's always a risk, but the relative risk will be less than a lot of other sites.
Okay, so it's not one that you're really keen to get into, from a safety point of view?
Oh, no, I didn't say that, we would be happy to help work up and develop solutions. I suppose that would, I think the first thing we should do, as John said, is we develop a solution, and then we sort out later, once the solution is agreed. and then we sort out later, once a solution is agreed to, if it can be agreed to, then we sort out the funding. You worry about the funding at the start, you won't do anything.
Thank you.
Councilor Noon, followed by Councilor Pegg.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Council Staines' first recommendation there clearly indicates the rocks. His proposal was to remove the rocks. Are you telling us in the report that if the rocks are removed, that does compromise safety, in particular the access from the mudflats coming up to Bay and Bank Road?
Yes, that's what I thought. So, yeah, if those rocks were removed, then a vehicle can gain access. And then there is a safety risk.
So would your recommendation, if the rocks were to be removed, your recommendation would be that some form of safety measures were implemented at the same time that the rocks were taken away?
My understanding there would be temporary road closure signs, is that right?
Sorry, this is, Councilor Noon is talking to this motion, which is different from the recommendation.
Well, I'm just using it for my questioning was, because I just wanted to understand that if the rocks are removed, in your professional opinion, your report is saying that there will be safety issues if we don't implement something straight away? When the rocks are, say the rocks are removed tomorrow, if we don't implement some form of safety measures, we're compromising safety, is that correct?
We're both compromising safety as well as liability. Our report indicates there is a safety concern, and if we make a decision that goes contrary to the safety advice, then we would open ourselves up to liability of negligence if we were to open it and there was an incident resulting from that.
So I haven't got a particular view on this, but I wanted to just clarify that. And the other question I had in my mind was that, from a safety point of view, implementing safer journeys is about prevention rather than reactive measures? Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Pegg, then Councilor Hawkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions around the safety angle. This track has been open for some time, I guess been used for some time. Do you know how long exactly?
We haven't had any confirmation, but we understand it's many decades. The people have mentioned three generations, so we've become towards 60 years minimum.
Okay. And in that time, is there any record of an injury accident or a non-injury accident at that corner?
We have had no records of injury crashes at that location. I'm only aware of incidents like vehicles getting stuck.
Okay. And the second point on this, that's in two parts, Madam Chair, is it?
I think that's in two parts.
Yeah, the second part calls for monitoring, and I'd be interested to know what speeds vehicles could actually attain on their exit from the beach, given how short that is and how steep it is. But have you any idea what speeds they might get up to there?
We've taken no readings of that. We only have anecdotal information from the people that live on either side.
Very good.
Yeah, thanks.
Hawkins, followed by Staines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to ask, comment from you in response to a couple of things that were raised by the Warrington Rate Players Association. One, in response in turn to this report, that there were, as far as they could see, no environmental impacts past or present as a result of the use of this as a boat access way. Do you have any comment on that?
Yes, in 2007, we received complaints from Parks and Reserves, then Parks Department, concerned about the damage that was being caused to the vegetation on those dunes. So there is a record there of damage to the vegetation, the response to which is a sign that's been included in the photos in September. So there was a record of damage occurring to that reserve. And as the report says, it is a food gathering place as well.
And secondly, they raised the issue of the nearby access, boat access being congested and potentially a greater safety risk than this one. The inference being that they were easing that congestion and those safety issues by using this option.
Well, actually, to be honest, I don't know how busy it is, but it is 650 metres away and there are three accesses available at that location.
But you don't, you don't have an idea as to whether that's a peak capacity?
No, no idea.
Thanks.
Councilor Staines, followed by Councilor Beattie.
I accept your point about the danger of moving the rocks without some mitigation. What would be the minimum mitigation that you would see necessary to warn pedestrians of a, of potentially a vehicle coming up there and to be cautious of that?
As the report recommends, that is exactly what we propose to do as the first part of the response, is to keep it closed until we've done that exact work and come back to with a price for that and an estimate of the effort required to make it.
How, well, next part of the question, how long is that going to take?
That will be done within, take two months.
Seems an inordinate long period of time.
Bearing in mind it's been closed 60 years.
The issue is illegally closed for six years, which concerns me a little bit, that in the comments you made, there's been record of use for more than 60 years and no record of injury accident to a pedestrian or a vehicle-to-vehicle in that time. And so I'm really wondering what, what very simple, quick measures could be made to enable that legal access to be open and to reduce the risk in the short term? As it was pointed out to us, this track's now down 1.3 metres wide. So it's probably not going to take a lot of vehicles down there in a hurry at that point. It's an unformed road. Anybody with a camper van who's silly enough to drive down it ought to know better anyway. So it's just, is it as simple as putting some posts and a little bit of timber across to cause pedestrians to cross closer to the road edge than to go behind the rocks, which is, so if they go the seaside of those rocks, I guess they're going to be in more danger because they're at the point where the vehicle's climbing, coming up to the point where they get to those rocks and they're stopped and chipped. So is it something as simple as that?
I think, as we mentioned before, that we do have policies and there are very clear guidelines around how to form safe vehicle accesses. And that is what we would propose to do that. You would need to, as Ron explained, you'd need to raise the level at the rear so that the vehicles approach to level. You would need to seal the surface with some sort of paving, which could be unsealed paving of some sort to protect the ground underneath it. You would need to do all those things that you've suggested. That would require funding, which we currently don't have allocated.
So do we require this on driveways, accessways within our city? Because I've been in plenty of driveways around the city where you arrive on the footpath with your vehicle without having visibility of whether there's a pedestrian. So do we have two sets of rules?
No, that's exactly right. What you've said is that we do have a policy around vehicle entrances. People do construct them not in accordance with our requirements, and we do then require them to upgrade those. The key thing about a vehicle entrance is to have a footpath and a vehicle crossing. On that footpath, it makes it clear to both footpath users and vehicles as to who has the right of way. So yes, we do have vehicle entrances that come straight out onto the footpath, but they're designed correctly and built correctly, which is not the case in this situation.
Would that be the case for properties in Dunedin that were constructed 60 years ago? And would you be requiring them to be changed now?
We do require that where they're not compliant with our current standards. And we do deal with a lot of cases with vehicle scraping and the likes, where we look at, well, what are our standards? If it complies with our standards, then the property owner has to make improvements. If it doesn't comply, then the council makes improvements.
So it's a retrospective requirement?
That's correct. A lot of vehicle entrances are built by members of the public without consent, and there's no consent required for that. So many have been built without, not in accordance with our current requirements.
Thank you.
Councilor Beattie, followed by Betsy Pope. Thank you. Councilor Betsy Pope.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Visser, I'm interested in the comment you made about liability earlier. You said that because it was a security concern, that there would be liability somewhere. Were we not to take notice of that? Where would that liability lie? With collective members around the table, with the council as a whole, with individual staff, any of you?
That would depend on the circumstances.
Well, tell me about these circumstances and where the liability would lie?
Well, an example would be that if a person got hit by a vehicle on the track, they may take legal action against the council. We do not know whether they would take that against the council, the individual that made the decision, or an officer.
Excuse me, on that question, can I just ask, we just delayed that because we said you're going to get some other vases. Is that okay? We'd just like a quick adjutant, five minutes on this one, please. Mr. Avery would like to make a statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just had a bit of a discussion about John's view that was expressed, that the council might be liable if you don't take account of the safety advice. We think it was overstated. You'd have to judge the risk that might be associated with any area like this. We're giving you safety advice and on that basis, you need to make a decision. We would need to get, I suppose, the law checked in terms of the degree of viability the council would have if it didn't take that advice and make a particular decision. But given that we have numerous, what might be called unsafe intersections or road situations around the city, you've got to make a judgment call on the risk. So we just wanted to clarify that. So we don't think that you need to make a call based on the risk that's been identified here, rather than being concerned about whether that would leave the council in a liability situation.
Thank you.
Any other seconds, Jane?
Just like to clarify on what Ron was talking about before, that our primary concern is in terms of safety, is the vehicles coming up out of the track, not necessarily up out of track into the road, formed roadway where pedestrians may be, rather than the vehicles along the road or coming down. It's primarily up with the lack of visibility to see what's oncoming pedestrians or traffic there is. And it is because of that safety concern that we're generally recommending not to, we are not recommending, we're recommending the rocks stay there until that there's been further consideration of how to mitigate those risks.
Thank you. Councilor Betsy Pope, did you have any other questions? The next one is Councilor Wiley, followed by Bill McTavish.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ron, in removing the rocks, wouldn't that increase the visibility?
It would, through the chair, it would to an extent. But the problem is also, when we're talking about vehicles coming up the ramp, it's not just between, I suppose, a potential conflict between them and pedestrians coming down the same ramp or the path. It's also on the outside of the bend there, there has been a footpath that was formed a number of years ago. And so there are pedestrians walking around along Bank and Bay Road. And it's just the combination, potential combination of speed, restricted visibility, though obviously if the rocks are gone, there is a bit more visibility and then those pedestrians going along there. And we've also read through a lot of submissions, not all of them, but a lot of them. And there are a number of submissions who made some comments about when it was open in the past, that there were, shall we say, people who come out of town who maybe aren't as familiar with maybe the local issues as much as the locals. And it's that potential risk that we've looked at. Suppose those out of towners, maybe some locals that were using the formed footpath on the outside of the bend where there's that risk as well.
Would a sign just saying four-wheel driver vehicles only take out a lot of those types of vehicles?
In a lot of cases, just signs don't work with people. People just don't see them.
Okay. When we, somewhere in here it says that the width of the track is 1.3 metres, what is it from tree line to tree line or bush line to bush line? Because obviously historically, vehicles used to go up and down.
I can't answer that. I don't know what the measurements are.
But all, historically, all vehicles used to be able to travel up and down that track, no problems?
They got stuck, for example?
Yeah, I fear they got stuck. And basically, it's, I suppose, it's through the submission process, what I've read in the submissions. And I suppose, the other thing too is to highlight, we are now part of safer journeys, which we weren't 10 years ago. And so it's very much about prevention. So what we might have done 10 years ago is different to what we would do now, our approach.
Okay. One final question. Under 7.2 Traffic Safety Concerns, the New Zealand Police and Ministry of Transport have been consult and agreed that the track should remain temporarily closed to vehicles until those safety concerns have been addressed. Is that verbal or do we have anything in writing?
Yes, they, both, both parties had a copy of essentially the form I sent to them, and they gave the full response in writing.
Councilor McTavish, followed by Councilor Hawkins. Thank you.
Two questions. The first is, John, you mentioned a bunch of correspondence that you had received from the community other than the Waikiki Residents' Association. Can you just run through what those were again, please?
The Waikiki Coast Community Board put an advert in the paper task for feedback on this topic. They received quite a large number of responses to that. I don't think it's time yet to actually read through all of them, but there really are a huge, huge stack of responses there from the whole community. They have been made available previously in the minutes of the Waikiki Coast Community Board minutes under the chairman's report for 21 May 2014.
Okay. And in terms of just looking at seven, three under options, I take it one to three are in effect one option? This is one option which you accumulate, right? It's not that you just do one, it's that you do one to three and one go?
There's potentially, you could stop it too if you find that there is an appropriate solution to mitigate the safety concerns.
Yeah.
Either one, two, or one, three would be the.
Right, yeah, okay. But in terms of other options that might be available, you don't see an option which involves removing the rocks at this stage to be a viable option in your professional opinion?
We have based that recommendation on the advice we've been provided by the safety advisor.
Okay. Given the fact that this track isn't used very often, the advice that we've received from the Residents' Association is that it's not a frequently used track and the opposition that people have to its closure is more a matter of legality or process rather than necessarily frequency of, or the relative use of this track. Is there another option which would reduce the amount of staff time that is put into this issue?
We haven't, in terms of alternatives, we haven't, we've sort of been quite clear in terms of the safety considerations. This is probably the most appropriate process for us to go through to determine what the solution might be. It could be very well that we get into the, looking at actual solutions to improve and mitigate safety concerns. And it may very well be some simple things that come out of it that would reduce the staff input going forward.
And in terms of the considerations in relation to safety concerns, I've heard a lot about safety concerns today. Under the process with which you are proposing, that you're proposing to follow, will there be equal emphasis on potential environmental outcomes?
That is in the recommendation, that an environmental impact assessment be part of. And any work on the coastal area would most likely require some form of consent, which would also address those environmental issues.
Thank you.
Councilor Hawkins, followed by the mayor.
The other access onto the beach sits 150 metres away. Is that the only other access to the beach?
Well, that's the only other one that I'm aware of. And I believe there are three accesses from roughly 150 metres away.
Or onto the beach?
Yes.
So they all go down one path, they're in a branch off, is that right?
Yes, and so I'll be with the stakeholders as well.
If, as I said before, if there was a fire or something in that area, how would people get on off the beach? Or how would fire service get to the water?
Well, two of the. Well, two of the accesses, I believe, go through a forest and another one just goes straight onto the beach itself and through Sanddune.
I visited the site this morning and had a look at it. Those stones were removed, the visibility. Those stones were removed, your visibility to your right is very, very good visibility down that track. And the visibility to your left is reasonable. As it says on the 7.5, the track itself is 1.3 wide, but there's a good metre of grass burned on either side.
What is your question?
Do you agree?
Do you agree that there would be no major work involved in opening that? If you took the stone away?
If you took the stones away, you're right, there would be no major work. Visibility would be improved. I suppose the problem, I believe, that we'll have is that, it's probably not so much with the locals, there is a risk that you could get some huns, which apparently was covered in some of the correspondence that I read, that they come down there, they come flying up the track. And then some residents are either wandering down the track or across the track as they go around from Benton, Benton Road as into Bay Road at the top there. And then you've got a potential conflict. So that's a risk that we've got, albeit a bit low.
The actual visual distance down and up is very short.
We're not devoting questions.
No, the other aspect of Ron's report talks about the parking activity that occurs if you open it up. So if you take the rocks away, you're replacing it with parked vehicles. And the parked vehicles would probably cause greater visibility in direction than the rocks themselves would.
Could you not put a barrier, a very large barrier, to the back? Would you block the traffic?
Again, the management of parking would be exactly the sort of thing we'd look at, what we'd need to do to make sure it works well and safe before opening it up.
Your worship?
Ron, I take it that there are situations, road situations around town, where you identify risk at an intersection or something. But because of low numbers or whatever, it's not a priority and you don't feel obligated to do anything about in the meantime?
We, yes, we, well, we assess all requests and then I suppose our response, the time and I suppose the solution will reflect that risk.
Right. So that being the case, presumably this, if the rocks weren't here, this intersection could very well fit into that category.
Yes.
Right. So the only reason that the recommendation is possible is that the rocks are there illegally. Is that fair enough? Because it wouldn't have got to the top of your priority list any other way.
As the report says, when we looked at the process used, the incorrect process was used. So a temporary closure for safety reasons done in the correct way would have been a preferable solution at the time it was done. It doesn't mean that the temporary closure couldn't have been done, it just means that it can't be done permanently. So yes, we do still need to correct that process. Either temporary or permanent, we have to follow the right process. And we need to do it from here.
The point that I'm raising is that there are a large number of risky to some extent situations, intersections, whatever, around the city. And they are not prioritised for perfectly good reasons, because of low numbers or whatever. And I've just ascertained that this, if the rocks weren't there, might fit into that category. My further question.
Sorry. My recollection is that this originally came up through the community and the community board as a safety concern, which was the original reason. So it is possible, without being speculative, that not having the rocks there might have still generated this question about the safety.
Fair enough.
The fact is we've got the rocks, which is what's generated it. But the experience, the information from the community is that could quite possibly have been raised as a safety concern anyway, without the rocks there. So we have the same effect.
Okay. And my second question that I make is, you mentioned the possibility of damage to sand dunes or whatever's there. Just, and this may be a question of Mr Avery, is environmental damage subsequent to someone driving down the road and off it a legal reason to close the road? I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know the answer, sorry. It can be, and again, you have to look at degrees of severity. Normal wear and tear is not considered damage to the road. It is expected that the road will wear as they do.
No, sorry, I'm not talking about the road. I'm talking about environmental damage after people have gone down the road and gone somewhere else. If people go down the road and go somewhere else and cause some damage, is that a legal reason to close the road?
There is provision in the Land Transport Act for closing a road to prevent damage to the environment.
Thank you.
There is provision for it.
Just for clarity, is it damage to the road or damage to the wider environment where they get access off the road?
It is damage to the road corridor. And just to bear in mind that that whole area for sure is part of the road corridor.
Before I go to the second round, because we've got some people wanting second questions, I'm going to have my first round. John, you mentioned motorbike homes or camper vans getting stuck. That is not a safety concern as such. And it cannot be taken into account and decided whether the rocks stay or not, can it?
No, I don't believe that's a safety concern.
Thank you. Ron, you just talked about huns could and huns might and do things. Do we act on any concern that huns might do something in the city? On every ability for them to do something?
Yes and no. We, if it's very intermittent, generally that is, you know, we refer that on to the police. And in other situations, we have implemented, shall we say, low-cost solutions, which we've did in the past, I believe, down Warrington by the cave there or the domain. We did some work there a few years ago. And so often our solutions are targeted at a risk, if it's low risk, it's low cost solutions.
Just want to understand the wider safety concerns on that corner, noting that where can people walk safely around that corner? Because we've talked about, and people alluded to, low walls and things to stop people being hit. But can they be on the other side of the road?
On the inside of the bend, I believe, a number of years ago. I think I was involved with that too. There was a concern expressed that there was no safe place for pedestrians to walk because of restricted visibility and was very, there was just no room for them to walk. So this formed pathway was formed on the outside of the bend to allow them to walk around that bend safely. Separated from the road and that's why it's got those little rocks there as a barrier.
Okay, Councilor Hawkins, we're on the second round.
Thank you. Just quickly, following up on your comments about illegal parking and those comments in the report, that hasn't been an issue since the rocks have been there?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm now going to let Councilor Staines speak to his motion. Who seconded it? Sorry. Oh, sorry, I think it's Councilor Penrose.
Look, I accept the comments made by staff that by removing the rocks, we will increase the risk of a vehicle pedestrian accident. However, in my mind, we have to weigh that up with what experience we have had in that area, on that accessway, with accidents over time. We've heard from staff that this accessway until 2008 had probably been used for more than 60 years. There's no recorded accident. There are some anecdotal evidence that there might have been some near misses. Probably more so that there may have been some concern that there might be a near miss. But there is no evidence recorded that there has been an accident. If I look around the city, there are many, many areas where accidents have actually occurred in the last 60 years. So in terms of the added risk by taking away these rocks, which currently are there illegally, seems to be, to be minor. Further, to make, to take some mitigation, I don't think we'll need some months of staff time and thousands of dollars. Firstly, a sign warning vehicle owners coming up it, that they must give way to pedestrians, will at least flag to them that there could be an issue and give them the opportunity. I don't see them coming up here at a high rate of knots, given the look of tow trucks. Particularly if they're towing a boat, they're probably going to be relatively slow. And given the steepness of it, probably in four-wheel drive, so hardly boy races. So I think there could be some very simple mitigation, low-cost, simple mitigation, which would allow the rocks that are sitting there illegally to be removed. And an opportunity to monitor the use of this accessway over a period of six months, as was suggested by Sir Julian, to identify whether the risks are real or not and what kind of mitigation that might involve us needing to take. Whether that be going through the process to close the road or whether it's through putting other measures in place which will make it easier and safer for its use. I accept the comment by staff that if vehicles park on the outside of that corner, they may well block the view of motorists trying to come up if they parked in close. But we have no parking signs all over the city. And they're hardly expensive. And if that meant that we had to put a couple of no parking signs in to make sure that vehicles didn't park hard up against the accessway, reducing the visibility of the motorists, which I would have thought would have been sensible anyway, then to me it's not a big issue. I look at it and I think, if a motorist was going too quick down that road, they could easily find themselves hitting one of those rocks. So are those rocks in fact a safety concern in their own right? Vehicle versus rock? I think we have to accept that as a city, we have placed rocks illegally on a legal road. We did not use the correct process. There is a lot of emotion and anecdotal evidence being given that these rocks stay and that this is high risk. But there's no recording that it has been in over 60 years. So I would be appealing to council to do the right thing, remove the rocks. If necessary, do that in conjunction with some low-cost, simple safety measures to at least make pedestrians aware of the danger of a vehicle coming up there and equally the vehicle owner aware of the fact that there can be pedestrians. Trim some of the vegetation a little bit, if that will help increase that visibility. And then do the monitoring to establish whether the need to keep it closed is real or not.
Thank you. Councilor Penrose, do you want to speak to your mark? Speaking now, any other speakers to this motion? Councilor Noo?
I would love to support this. And my personal view, I haven't got a fixed position on it, but my concern is with Councilor Staines's motion is it removes the rocks without at least assessing the safety issue in more detail. And whatever the solution is, I mean, we don't know what the experts will come up with. But I just wanted to touch on some of the background because there's been a lot of discussion. Councilor McTavish asked a question about the Waikatoi Coast Community Board feedback that, okay, I'll just share it with everyone else, with regards to what were the general comments? Well, essentially, the people that live probably in the close proximity to this particular access are dead against the rocks moving. The people that live further away and generally drive to the beach would like to see the rocks removed. So in general terms, that was the feeling, that was the feedback that we had. It's divided. I have a considerable amount of respect for Sir Julian and I know he has been on this particular case for a long time. But equally, there are other people in the community on the other side of this argument that have also been on the case for equally as long. In terms of the chief executives, I can remember Paul Orders when he left, his final comment to me was to sort the rocks out at Warrington. And I've failed. Boy races, we had a large meeting in the Warrington Hall, probably seven or eight years ago. George Fraser, the superintendent that Sir Julian referred to, was at that meeting. There was real issues in Warrington around boy races. There were people that felt extremely threatened by some of the actions of those road trains. And from that, Mr Minima referred to other rocks that have been situated down on the reserve, the main reserve area, to avoid boy races cutting up that sort of main grassed area. They were using this track at that time. There was no doubt about that because that was actually raised at that meeting. In terms of footpaths, it's been talked about, the footpath that was established, which is basically the gravel verge on the edge of the carriageway, the road itself. That was created not that long ago, as Mr Minima alluded to. People were walking around that inner side of the, of that corner with very little visibility. So once again, the board was concerned about that, so we pushed for that. In terms of it being available for the last 60 years, no track record of incidents or accidents. I just stress the point that Safer Journeys is more about prevention. And I would also argue vehicles probably travel faster this day and age than they certainly did in the past. And I suppose my own final comment would be, I would not be at all surprised if you look around the city and you see the number of rocks that have been used to prevent vehicles gaining access on grassed verges. I would imagine there will be a legal road somewhere else around the city that will be in this exactly the same situation. I can't put hand on heart, but this could be just the, I don't know about the tip of the iceberg, but there will be others.
Are you putting a prize up for anyone who finds one?
Not at this stage.
Your worship?
I accept the staff's analysis that there is a risk here. But I don't personally believe that the sufficient problem or proven risk to justify all of the trouble that the recommendation that was in the report seeks. It's a short, straight track with very good visibility coming out to traffic, not to pedestrians. The only concern seems to be pedestrians. And I would point out that most of the people who would legitimately go down there for a reasonable reason would have a four-wheel drive. Because that's what you take a boat with these days. And you can come up that track at a crawling pace in a four-wheel drive, which you can't do in a two-wheel drive car. So you'd be approaching the top quite slowly. I further think that, well, I wonder about the credibility. I know that some of the submissions, I know that they've been passed on in good faith. But there seems to be too many areas here where there's lack of credibility. Where the fibre optic cable was. The fact, you know, maybe there were boy races tried it once, but I know what their cars looked like. And I don't think there'd be very many without a scraped ass after they'd gone up this track, given how close they are to the ground. So they wouldn't do it more than once. So I simply endorse Councilor Staines's simple recommendations. It's not hard to figure out how to make this safer. And I go back to what I was saying in question time, that there are oodles of intersections and situations around our town which are far more risky than this and we haven't prioritised yet. Why are we going to so much trouble with this one? It seems to me a whole of staff resources could be poured into this for very little return.
Thank you, Councilor Perez.
Yes, look, I support this resolution. To me, it's just a common sense resolution. It's something that's quite practical and we put into place quite easily. Council Staines has referred to the fact that it can be some quite inexpensive safety measures applied, and it is for a six-month period. I came along here today initially, I was going to support the recommendation. And I think the comments that John has made with regards to safety and other issues are relevant and should be taken on board. And perhaps council is at a risk if we were to, if the rocks were moved and there was an accident, then the finger could be pointed at us. But when Mr Minima made some comments about what would have to be done, what could possibly be done to the track to improve its safety, I started thinking about the fact that it was temporarily going to be closed for some time. And how long was that? And Council Penrose asked the question. There was no firm answer, about two, maybe three months. And it's been temporarily closed for eight years, I believe. And then when Mr Minima started talking about safety aspects, I thought hello, there's more cost involved and there's more time delays than that. Improving the track and then levering the track at the top so that you're level with the roadway so you can look left and right. I thought that's a bigger job than what I thought. And I don't think that's necessary. So why I accept that staff have got to make these decisions based on the safety factors and other issues. On my average, I think it's a relatively safe driveway, roadway. So I support it and I hope other councils have the same view. It will only be for six months and we review it. And if there is a need for further safety aspects to be introduced, then that's all we can do at that stage.
Thank you councillor Wiley.
I'm also going to support this. I struggled why the road was closed in the first place or the track was closed in the first place and illegally. I'm also disappointed that when I asked my question previously about the New Zealand Police report, he said it was in writing, it wasn't included. I would have loved to have seen what they had to say. But the other thought that I had in reviewing this time and time again was there's no discussion here about motorbikes. I would anticipate motorbikes have been using this road while it's been closed or this track while it's been closed. Yet there hasn't been any effect, no outrage, no accidents. So I can't put my hat on why we would maintain it closed to vehicles and four wheel drives at that. Because I, like me, cannot understand why boy races would take several thousand dollar car down a track to leave it down there and watch the sea wash it away.
Thank you councillor Pevish.
Madam Chair, I won't be supporting the submission of this motion. I am I guess having just run through a bunch of the submissions, I think it's a shame that they weren't attached to this report because I think that it would have spoken some of the issues that councillor Noon has been exposed to over the last 10 years or however long it's been and and give some, a bit more of an indication of the community's concerns about what the impact of removing the rocks might be. I accept that the process to put them there in the first place was not followed and that we do need to rectify that. We need to have a look at whether or not there are other options. But I don't think that we should be doing that in a way that compromises or potentially compromises the safety of particularly children in that area. And I think that there is significant community concern about that, just having had a look through these submissions and I think it would be a real shame if we did that. I also think we have staff expert advice for a reason and the recommendations from our experts are fairly strong. They've been fairly robustly tested this afternoon and there is, there's no real movement that removing the rocks at this stage in their professional view is an option that we should be considering. So I think that would be a bold possibly silly move on behalf of council to contravene that advice. So I won't be supporting this, albeit I can understand the sentiments of councillors around the table who would prefer council staff's time and expertise to be applied to more urgent situations.
Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you madam chair. I can't support this. I can't support this motion either. And we've talked a lot about safety and I won't relitigate those points, but I share the concerns of councillor Noon with regards to safer journeys and those articulated by councillor McTavish. But I'm also concerned about the broader environmental impacts of reopening this. And I think that it would be a lost opportunity to not be looking into those before we just bobble it up tomorrow and remove the rocks and see what happens for a while. I note that both the staff recommendation and this motion interim measures, they both seek to reopen it if it is possible. They will both require work from staff over that period. The difference is the recommendation takes a more precautionary approach and this doesn't. So I can't support this, but I, and I will foreshadow that I will move at a slightly amended recommendation to take into account mitigation of any possible environmental impacts should this motion fail.
Councillor Ball?
Oh, I can't believe I'm on the same side as the Greenies for entirely different reasons. I am. It's traumatic. That makes life something that's difficult for me to handle. Look, I think this motion will be passed, but I'm going to vote against it. And I'm not going to vote against it because I want to encourage Sir Julian's wrath, which I probably will do. But I want to do it. I don't believe that there's any environmental impact at all. I've got no real dangers about that. And I've got, looking at that, no real dangers with even the safety of coming up there. I think you can't come up here quite slowly and pop it through. The reason is the staff have recommended that it stay closed. And I'm going to agree with the staff because it's their job to make those decisions. It's not my job to sit and argue that it's something inside. Right. But the day I start telling these people that they're not doing their job right, the day I make myself an expert. So I'm going to vote against it, but not because I give a toss effect whether we squash a puffy on the beach or squash a starfish or a bit of a plant, but just because that's the way I was thinking when I came to that.
Okay, no other speakers to be rightfully applied? Would you like to exercise that councillor Staines?
Again, I'd just like to express that while there is a risk in opening this access way, the evidence would suggest that that risk is fairly small. And probably a lot smaller than you would find in many other road situations around our city. I would certainly be quite supportive of a consequential motion should this one be passed. Requiring staff to assess the possible risk mitigation measures that can be undertaken in a relatively short period of time. So that that could be combined with the removal of the rocks. However, my hesitation around that has been that we've heard that it could be a couple of months before anything could be done. And I don't think that it's reasonable in this situation where the rocks are there illegally and have been for eight years. And, you know, I think we need to put that right as fast as we can and two months too long. If that work could be done quickly, it would be sensible to do it. In responding to councillor Wiley's comments, I actually think when you look at the photographs, there's a wear pattern there that would be indicative of wheeled vehicles, probably two wheeled vehicles having used that track to get down. It seems to be a clear wear pattern. I don't think the walking would have kept the grass down and shown that same V structure that we tend to see in the photographs. So it's probably being used by motor vehicles now, just not four wheeled four wheeled rocks. So I would, I would suggest that councillors, we do the right thing. And that is that we take away the rocks because they're there illegally. And I will be supportive of the motion should any of you wish to move it. That we ask staff to as quickly as possible and preferably a lot less than some months, come back to us with some mitigating measures that would take it to a minimum acceptable risk, given that it's only for a trial period. And let's get on with it.
Just for clarity, does that have to come back to us or could it be implemented? You just said to come back with it to us?
Well, if someone wished to move the consequential motion.
But it wouldn't have to necessarily come back to us. It would be operational. Sorry, I just want to clarify.
The thing I want to see here is that we don't end up saying we'll leave the rocks there. We'll then get the community up and close the road and then it will all gone away. I think we need to test whether the perceptions are real rather than take, and take, rather than take all the emotion that's built up around it. It's been closed for eight years illegally. Let's put that right and let's take an opportunity, provided it's for a limited period for staff, just to understand whether what people perceive is actually real.
I'm now going to put the motion. I'm going to ask you to put your hands up because I think it's going to be relatively close, but I may be wrong. So if you could show up hands, those who have, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Harry, thank you.
I have my voting hands recorded, please.
Is there a consequential motion?
Mine also, mine as well, sorry.
Is there a consequential motion?
I agree with what Paul asked. He suggested that staff look at minimal safety with regards to what can be done in the short term because obviously there'd be some people close to the rocks, as councillor Noon pointed out, who are mainly concerned. And it would be, it would be good to be able to investigate, as he says, like some no parking or some safety factors in the short term.
Yeah, no, that's fine. But Hawkins and Noon, you said a consequential motion that was, if this one lost, wasn't it?
Yeah, well, I didn't get the opportunity to say that I would second, but I had planned to second, but that's not relevant.
It's not relevant now. So the motion, do you want it as emotional? Do you want to just know that this, the expectation that staff will do something?
Yes, I think that that we've got the message on Paul.
Are you happy with that?
We'll look at what we can do operationally.
Thank you. Okay. Infrastructure, sorry, the transportation 10 year new capital program, item eight.
If this is an obstruction process, officers would look like that notice so we know what obstruction is.
So the notice that in taking away the rocks, they want the minimum requirements of safety, including no parking signs and things that you, addressing those issues with the minimum expenditure.
It would be very helpful if that's not, well, I can move that, that's.
If you want to move that?
Can you submit a motion near there?
Could we come back to this? I know the councillors likely would like to hear some of these other items. So we'll come back to just doing that motion if that's okay. For someone for wording for Lynn, please. Okay, are you happy with that? Thank you John and Bronn. Your statement, Gina, I think for Sarah. Gee, would you like to talk us through this report, please?
Brief introduction, I think it's pretty straightforward. What we've got here, relatively speaking, is an initial program that due to the timing with the NZTA regional and national and transport program processes as compared to our council processes, which is slightly out of sync, that we need to forward a program through to the regional transport committee that would go through those respective processes I just mentioned. So this is an advance of our own council processes. And that is a matter of course through those council processes, that program that is here as an initial program would be amended when considering the broader other council capital program and other discernments.
Okay. Any questions? Oh, sorry, Siri, what did you add?
Oh, just to reiterate that submitting the any projects to the RLTP does not commit council to actually doing those projects. There's no commitment and but it keeps it open as a possibility and that we can delete the projects later depending on what transpires through the LTP process.
And can we add others in?
No, you can't add any in after the 30th of September.
Just a point of clarification, but through the course of time, you can seek a variation, I understand, to the program, but that does take quite a bit of time.
Any questions councillor Hawkins?
Thank you madam chair. With regards to the regional transport committee's decision making process, what weighting does our submitted list of priorities have? Or are they all regardless of what priority we rate them as rated against a neutral criteria?
The regional transport committee only consider the projects that have been submitted, but they don't consider what the council's priority is. They just look at all the projects and they decide what their own priorities are.
So what is the point in us submitting them in a prioritized order?
Oh, so the prioritization is to help with the staging and the timing. So the higher priorities are scheduled earlier in the 10 year program.
We have the ability, as you say, to take things out but not to add things in. Do we have the ability as this process goes on to reprioritize or move within those things?
Yeah, so we can make changes.
Councillor McTavish?
Just for clarity, the the recommendations refer to the initial new capital projects. Is that as outlined in table four or as outlined in appendix? Sorry, attachment two? I mean, which level of detail do you submit? Again, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, it's closer to the attachment to level of detail.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Pevish?
On the, on 8.3, you talk about travel choices. And it says there that reprioritize investment and re-ow and reallocate space on the network to achieve a significant improvement in the provision of active travel modes and public transport. In terms of active travel modes, does this mean that you're going to be taking away from the travel mode that most people use, which is the car? And you're going to give over that reallocated space and reprioritize investment over to cycling? Is that what that means?
Councillor Mandevus, this is not their statement, this is our statement that we adopted as council from the integrated transport strategy. I just want to make it clear that this is our words, not staff words.
Well, they might have been your words, they certainly were mine. And they certainly wouldn't be the words of the people I represent. What I'm wanting to clarify is what these words actually mean. And if what these words actually mean is taking away parking and taking away car lanes and taking away the width of car lanes in order to provide cycle lanes, I just would like to know if that's what is proposed here.
Not necessarily proposed at this stage. There's certainly in terms of the ITs or the strategy, there was a number of projects that were taking through the focus and the strategic direction goals that resulted in a number of projects that were in the strategy, which have been now through the process that we've gone through, have evolved a bit further in terms of that thinking and are included in the program. So it's a bit early and premature to say that what the specific implications would be in terms of parking or modes.
Okay, it says in the same thing that the percentage of Dunedin census respondents who cycle, walk, take the bus to work increases from 16%, this is a goal, 16% of the 2006 census to 40% of 2024. Do you think that that is achievable? And do you think that other cities that have tried it, for instance Vancouver, have had any success that we come anywhere near that goal? My question is, is that goal actually achievable?
Councillor?
And if not?
Councillor Mandevus, I'm not going to relitigate the integrated transport strategy here today. This is about the transport 10 year capital program, which is, that is just one part which gets leads into why we're doing it. We're not going to relitigate.
I'm not relitigating it with respect, madam chair. What I'm doing is I'm looking at basis on which this 10 year strategic direction is being programmed. And I'm looking at that basis. And I'm looking at that basis to see whether in fact that basis has a chance of flying in terms of the goal. If we're talking about the next 10 years, then certainly we've got to consider the goal that is printed on eight point three. And that goal says that we want to take it from 16% to 40% by 2024. Now, I've done some independent research in the meantime and I've discovered that there is not a snowballs chance in hell of that goal being achieved. And if it's not able to be achieved, then that means that most of what is proposed here in the recommendations one, two and three is actually not available.
That's not necessarily cause and effect and I'm not going to relitigate the transport strategy.
I'm not litigating anything, I'm simply quoting what's in the report and I'm trying to say that the recommendations that apparently flow from it actually don't, and they don't.
One of order. This is question time, this isn't a question. And furthermore, I think it's unreasonable to expect staff to pass opinions on what council has given as a goal and, and I just think it's completely inappropriate and I like it more.
The, turn to the.
Would you like me to move the recommendations, Madam Chair?
No, I'm just going to say, I cannot deal with anything except the point of order and so I'm saying it's missed. It's your point, that it's a discussion of question, not the local authority. And that is under three twelve four C. Thank you, because we're not relitigating the transport strategy, we're doing the ten-year plan. So if you want to ask questions, not on the background, but on the actual discussion document, I'd be grateful. I'm going to hold your paper.
Um, with respect, I only ask what's on the document, but I'll stick to the actual recommendation box if that would make you happy.
I said the discussion document, not the background document, which is what my point was.
Is it possible that this set of recommendations can actually achieve the goals that you have set out?
That we have set out?
That are set out in the paper. It's a very difficult question to answer categorically, but it is possible. You believe it is. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll move the recommendation.
All three of them?
Yep.
Second, councillor Hawkins? Any other questions or, uh, do you want to talk to your motion, please, councillor?
Yes, please. Um, I'd note that one of the issues that's, um, addressed in here in respect of the provision of a, in the wider discussion, the provision of further car parking is some possible development on the Frederick Street site. So I just don't think it's, um, displaying the whole, uh, discussion to focus on the removal of parks. For example, when the city's talking about trying to also strategically locate more at a, at a key part of the, of the inner city network. I think this is a paper that reflects the conversations that we've, we've all been involved in and other parties have been involved in. And I think, uh, clearly it will always be a moving feast as these projects are negotiated, discussed and modified and indeed reprioritized as time goes on. I think we should get on with it.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this? Councillor Vanvis?
Councillor Wiley has very kindly sent us all a very interesting, uh, set of information regarding the enormous investment that Vancouver, which is Canada's warmest city, that Vancouver put into cycleways and separated cycleways. They did this over a period of years with enormous budgets, they had a massive influx of especially Asians, uh, migrating to, to Vancouver. And they anticipated that, uh, putting all these millions into, uh, cycleway development would result in a similar, uh, increase in take-up of cycling as happened in Seattle, the oft-quoted Seattle. If you look at the graphs, and I'm hoping that councillors did, but just in case they didn't, the graphs of cycle usage in Main Street in Vancouver and over their main bridge, you see that the graphs are basically a tent. They're a tent that has a peak in the middle of summer and that falls off rapidly to almost nothing, uh, in the winter. What I believe this shows us, and I think, uh, we can expect something very similar here, given that we have an even more hilly topography here than Vancouver and we have a lot less money to do this, is that if we were to go ahead and spend what is proposed in the recommendations over the next 10 years on what is made out to be alternative modes of transport, then we are going to end up with a very similar result to Vancouver and that is to say, an awful lot of money spent for very little return at all. And if you look at the results of actual cycle usage, you'll realize that it's massive in the middle of summer and that it drops drastically through the rest of the year. This to me suggests that all the talk about cycling being a mode of transport is fundamentally misleading. I believe that cycling is no more a mode of transport than jogging. And the graphs show that cycling is just a summer-homage hobby or sport, rather than the claimed mode of transport. The idea that we are going to put massive amounts of infrastructure in to what has recently become a relatively popular hobby and dress it up as an important mode of transport for our transportation strategy, uh, to me stretches the point several times, uh, in directions which overseas experience shows simply are not going to be good value for money. I've said previously in meetings, and I won't, uh, go into detail again, that I'm simply over the spending, the endless spend on cycleways that has been pushed by a very small unacted minority in Dunedin. The people that I represent don't want more money spent on cycleways. They certainly don't want any one of these three recommendations here. I will be voting against recommendations one, two and three because that is what the people that voted for me would want me to do.
Thank you. Sorry, I've just got two questions and I'm sorry, we've got three questions more quickly than I planned and I didn't ask them. I'm just wanting to ask on page eight point eight, whether the reference to just car parking on Frederick Street should be, um, car parking or whether it's just parking? Because there is potential that it'd be mixed parking. And why the references, I mean, I don't mind parking building, but I'm not quite sure that it should just be car park. And we've had safety concerns about electric bikes and other people not being able to get covered by parks as well. So I'm just wondering if parking facility would be better?
Yeah, that would be better.
And if that'd be acceptable change for the mover, since it would probably have to come in under that specification. And the only other one is, um, in reference again on the last box in eight point eight, um, the strategic, I, I don't, I appreciate that we've been approached by New Zealand Cycle Trials to a concept plan, but I'm not quite sure that the city itself has articulated clearly the message of the southern preferred route. And while I understand most of that box, I'm not quite sure why you would add the words in, does not include tunnels, because that may in fact be the preference the city chooses to in due course. And you're excluding it, potentially unnecessary in your wording here.
It's just that the cost doesn't include the tunnels, not that, that routes couldn't potentially include the tunnels, but the cost we've got at the moment, just for the on-road.
Okay, I'm just, I, I, it's just a mixed message and I'm just wondering, if it's five million dollars, it just should be five million dollars and if, 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 if that reference to that could be excluded, I think that just leaves the city with choices that it may wish to, at some later stage, decide on. If, if, and as long as that's acceptable, going to the mover and second to those side line operations?
Yeah.
Um, so, is that okay for the movers and seconders for those site operations?
It's alright.
Are you happy with that as mover?
Yeah.
That's like operation? Councillor Hawkins?
Yeah.
Okay, um, any further discussion, wanting to talk to the motion? You would like to write a reply? Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair, I, I just have some literally when I look at this paper, um, to understand or, um, to understand the, um, what I think is quite a myopic focus on cycling. This is not just about cycling. Every table on listed here, to me, lists 10 or 15 different projects. Cycling may be part of it, but we're talking about the eastern freight bypass, we're talking about central city safety, we're talking about the priority we're giving to the tertiary sector safety improvement. So I think it's important that, um, that the community has an understanding that this isn't one person's fixation about cycling or against cycling. This is a considered process at this point of the discussions about the whole raft of projects that people think are priorities for a better urban environment in the city. And I think we should get on with it.
If you're okay for cycling?
Okay, we're going to put the motion all in paper, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No, record it, please.
Harry, thank you very much. Item nine point one, street cleaning and litter collection regime action plan progress updates. Hello, Peter. Yes.
I have a question.
Sorry, I just, they'd like to speak, we'll let them sit down before we ask them, they're up. Would you like to talk, Peter? Are you feeling comfortable?
Um, I was going to do a brief introduction, but I'll keep it very brief then. So since the last meeting, we have done some work, uh, with ourselves and also some discussion with the contractors to think about what the actions are that we're going to take and we've broken those down into short, medium and longer term. Uh, some of the short-term stuff has proceeded, uh, progressed well, but it's worthwhile acknowledging that there is more work to be done to, um, sort of see some improvements potentially out in the, in the, in the roads itself or in the street cleaning itself.
Okay. Any other questions? I think councillor Benson Pope has, well, question first, um, has anyone taken up the offer that was made at the last ISCOM meeting for people to do a site visit on their orders?
Uh, I'm not too keen on this.
Thank you.
I was impressed.
Thank you. Do you want to use your mic so that everyone can hear that?
I said, I was impressed, Mr Benson Pope's got it all wrong just for the regal.
Councillor Benson Pope, have you got some questions?
Unfortunately councillor Lord may be more used to an environment that's covered and affluent than most of us. However, I am, you asked for that, I'm delighted, Madam Chair, to see, um, to see this report. Um, and I'm, I'm equally pleased to see the work that has been done in, in part of George Street. Uh, and I, I want to ask about that in due course, but can I just ask about, um, some of the material on page nine two, uh, in terms of the cleaning? Um, you'll recall that when this matter was raised at the last meeting, I was concerned that there was a difference between cleaning and sweeping, which was not properly identified or differentiated. I have to say when I read that daily cleaning involves one man with a hand sweeper, broom and shovel, um, that concern is not alleviated. I don't think enough resource or appropriate resource is being, uh, yet applied to this issue. Would you agree?
Thank you for the question.
What's being applied was actually basically what's been asked for within the contract. So we've actually specified how many cleans a day this, uh, this area is to be, uh, to, to receive. Um, it's quite open to lift that level of service. Um, the times a day when they goes, we think, you know, it takes five, 10 minutes later, sort of thing can be littered again. So, um, where we actually draw our line on what we actually ask for, that's, that's.
Well, can I just elaborate on that? Do you understand my concern about the issue, the difference between cleaning and sweeping? When daily cleaning, as you detail it, talks about one man with a hand sweeper broom and shovel. Nightly cleaning talks about sweeper trucks, hand sweeping and shovel for cleaning spills. And paver cleaning, which is the first time any scrubbing is mentioned, which in itself, because of the water blasting, is causing issues rather than solving them. And I'm just, do you, you understand the focus I'm putting on sweeping is not cleaning?
Indeed. Um, you, you're right, there's actually two parts. We, um, there is the nighttime clean where I, I tend to think there's sufficient staff on that time and as is described there to actually clean the actual streets, do one whole clean of the streets. The guys you have a day is once again, sorry, cleaning, sweeping, what are you talking about? Sweeping in that time. Uh, there's a chap for your day who picks up litter and does sweeping as well. The cleaning is really the one monthly clean that we do with the, uh, water blasting.
Oh, thank you. My other comments aren't questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I do have some que, one more question about the grouting. You talk about the work that's been done already to do, repair the grouting, um, on page nine three in the middle.
Yes.
Um, can you tell me where that work's been done, please? The program that began on 20 August?
Sure. We, um, by, from Readings down to Princess Street was carried out and also Edinburgh Way. The first areas that got cleaned, so the grouting's come up behind regular cleaners.
And is it, my observation is that so far it's on the western side of George Street, not the far side, is that right?
Correct.
And are you happy with the level of, the standard of the work and the performance of that work?
The grouting? I've only actually checked the reading area at the moment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any good questions? Councillor Wiley?
Um, thank you. When we talk about, um, on nine point two, nightly cleaning, the two road surface and curb and channel sweeper trucks, do you get GPS report on a regular basis from these trucks?
They're all, they all have GPS, yes, so they can be.
Do you, do you ever get a report on?
A lot of actual reporting that's actually held, there's, there's an awful lot of information we collect. It's actually, um, it's held with a contractor, so anytime we actually want it, we can ask them and get it.
But you've never asked for it? You haven't thought to ask for it or have just?
If we had any doubts about anything happening, yes, we definitely would do.
Okay. Um, and the second question I have is, um, do you think more toilets in the downtown hall would reduce some of the cleaning requirements?
Most definitely.
Uh, councillor Haw?
In here on your, um, daily cleaning, you said, um, it involves a man with hand sweeper, broom and shovel. Um, yet on the twenty fourth of July, we were told, um, there was two being doing this same job. Why didn't that one man do it?
I mean, just a matter of clarity, there's two guys at night doing a footpath and carrying out that work. They do a complete clean. Obviously at night where there's a lot more activity, that's when generally there's a lot more mess. When we do a sweep through, it's usually set for the day. And we have one man who actually sweeps the street during the day and picks up rubbish.
I can also clarify that I just recall that the previous report was referring to how we do the street cleaning, which would have included port charmers at the time, uh, whereas this is referring to just the central city activity area.
So it says in here you had not, uh, the contract has nine staff doing this job.
Yes.
That takes nine at a day or?
All, all staff involved in the cleaning.
Nine at a day, because, uh, we now, figures.
So can I just, Trevor, just, um, when you said nine staff, that's for the area broader than the CBD, isn't it? The nine staff, or is it?
Contract has a team of nine staff designated to street, street cleaning logically.
Yeah, that's from the previous report, is that? Yeah, so that was referring to, uh, all resources for street cleaning broadly, not just sectors for the activity area.
So one, one, once again, can you explain here that nightly cleaning which takes up four men? So that leaves five for doing the day work, which, um, it takes, when you stack up the nine men, we have a lot of services you offer into here, can you explain that?
With the nine people, we also have, uh, staff that actually sort of double team, uh, cleaners, like obviously shifts. So the actual, the, the cleaning machines, the sweepers, actually sort of have different shifts. Different staff that come on at times.
So now they'll be still counted in the nine, the doubles and the double truck right there?
Yes.
So they, they go two sweepers or three sweepers?
Two sweepers.
Two sweepers. And that reason I quoted is three, which makes it.
There's, there's one available when peak times, when we have, uh, leaf drop, um, gritting, that's the place we actually call a third truck in.
And events.
Sorry?
And events.
And events, yes.
Yeah, just the numbers don't stack up, and I've been trying to work out, but you might explain how that.
I'm sure that that's a question that could be put outside of the committee meeting for clarity, I'm sure that assistance.
Quite agree.
One other question is, with the sand, if we're using water blaster, they'd be blowing the grouting up between pavers. So are we paying to put that grout back in, or they have put in their costs and they're blowing it out?
They put it in their cost, but it is a concern, trying to get that right, cleaning regime. It's with the type of pavers that we have, it's troublesome. Like we get the same sort of, if we do a scrubbing, we get the same deterioration of that grouting as well. So it's not just actual water blasting. So it's just trying to strike the best.
It doesn't seem to have been a problem in the previous contracts, that's all I'm getting at, it seems to be a problem here now.
No, it's been a constant problem. As long as we've had those bricks, there's been a constant problem of sand loss, especially the cleaning.
The age of the pavers and their condition could also be contributing to that factor as well. We've taken an approach more recently to minimise the maintenance of that, because we expect that it will be, there's a potential for a larger replacement programme in the near future, so we have reduced that expenditure. So as part of this sort of more intermediate action, we are, as we've outlined there, done a reasonably large inspection of all the pavers, coming up with a revised maintenance programme. And I think my personal view of looking at this matter is that, I think that if we were to replace those pavers in a bit more aggressively, that would go a long way to making it look a lot more cleaner.
Councillor Lord?
Our office is fully closed.
As recommended?
As recommended, yeah.
Do we have a second, sir? Thank you, councillor Pete. Any discussion, do you want to put to your motion?
Well, all I just was going to say in that contract, Mr Benson Pope's opinion, I'm not actually too worried about the area effluent, but keep it reasonably clean, chip up. What I think is, we have a problem here in that we can have whatever standard we do want to have, and I believe the standard that we've got would be acceptable if our community. I don't believe all the rubbish on our streets is blown out of the bins. I believe we've got a real, real problem in the city with people thinking our streets and our bike paths are an acceptable place to dump rubbish. And I see clear evidence of this when I drive around, whenever, wherever suburbs I go, I see bottles and cans and all sorts of stuff that for not too much effort could be put into a bin, bins are not that far apart. And kept in a car till we get home and then dumped in a bin. And, you know, we can have a really high standard if we want it to rate people more and pay more, but I don't think that's an acceptable standard that people want to pay for a lot more. But I think a good education, very, I really believe we could do a lot better in terms of what we do with our rubbish. I don't believe all this rubbish blows out of the rubbish bins, I believe it never goes into them. And, you know, I think the guys are generally doing a pretty good job. And I guess when we look at our local alcohol policy, there might be reasons why things are filtered, when you start bringing bars to it, particularly at closing times and that sort of stuff, and it might make it easier for those guys to, you know, we sit there and debate about whether they work later in the morning to avoid the vomit. The reality of it is, what if you clean the street and someone comes along and vomits straight after you, and you go back and do it again and again and again. So my personal view is that we're doing pretty well, and we just need to educate people a bit better.
Okay, councillor Benson Pope?
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this, but I do, I do need to respond to that. Please, councillors, this is not about litter. There might be an issue with litter, but this isn't about litter. The photos I showed you last month were not about litter, they were about the filthy condition of the streets. This is about cleaning the pavers, not picking up litter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be picked up?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to thank the staff for responding to our request to look at this issue of how clean our streets. And clearly there are some things following up, which would improve the situation. I'd be interested for a future committee report, Madam Chair, to hear from the staff about the single, a single word answer, yes, to when the question of the number of toilets in the CBD. And I wondered whether that could be the subject of a future report in terms of what staff are thinking about, whether, how many we might need and where they might be placed.
I'm not sure if the councillor's phone, I think it might go under community. Is it in the structure?
Definitely not in the structure.
We will, I will talk to the other chairs about which way that can be done, thank you, can we do that under Madam Chair though? Thank you. Councillor McCabbish?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I mean, I take councillor Benson Pope's point that he didn't initially raise this issue in relation to litter, but I think litter is mentioned in this report and there are actions in relation to litter, which staff are going to be working through, which is really great. Two things, firstly around the littering issue, I do hope that one of the things that staff will be looking at when they consider number six and seven on the median term actions, is how, it is a digital solution, how that solution might be used for other council issues as well. So whether or not there's an act that could be developed that would enable better reporting or more empowered citizens to report on a range of issues rather than just it being about littering, I think that that will give us more bang for our buck rather than just focusing narrowly on the littering issue. The second issue that I would like to flag is just in relation to considering, I know, investigating alternative cleaners, appreciate that might be something that we need to do, and I would hope that we would be remembering as part of that, that all of our store water network straightens straight into the harbour, and that we need to be being very conscious about what it is that we're putting on our streets for that reason.
Definitely considering those issues.
Certainly the discussion we had with the contractor was around, reminded about we don't kill our fish, so it was very much central focus.
Anyone else wish to speak to their motion? I've put the motion, are there right of reply? Thank you. All the papers, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Very, thank you. Next item is recycling services for central activity area. I expect Mr Hall, councillor Low Hawkins, will be the first one to speak to this. Anne and Laura, thank you. Welcome. Would you like to speak to your report, Anne?
This is just an update on the progress that we've made so far towards the work investigating the providing residents in the CBD with a recycling collection service. It was in our waste management minimisation plan for probably in the next 12 to 18 months, but from the request from council, we've pulled that forward. So we've sort of pulled stops out to try and get some information together for this coming LTP process. So we've identified the areas that we're, is the central activity area, and pulled off as much information about the types and uses of the properties in the area, discussed it with our policy team and our communications and marketing team too, who have suggested we certainly carry out a survey to establish the demand in the area. I know a lot of people have been getting contact from the public about wanting these services in the area, and we know the warehouse precinct has certainly been quite a driver for this. So we're looking at the whole area. So we've engaged a survey consultant that we're currently waiting for the prices to come back on, and we've put together a plan to look at getting a survey out for the weeks of, starting about the 22nd of September, for two weeks, and having it closed on the 3rd of October, to then have it analysed and no one else to come back to a report back to ISCOM for the 25th of November.
Great. Thank you very much. Laura, do you have anything? Any questions? Councillor Hawkins?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and what joy filled my heart to set us on the agenda of the meeting this afternoon. A few questions though, who's the private collector of cardboard? Is it a service that people pay for or is it someone?
It's a free service that was set up before my time and full circle currently go through town on a Monday and Thursday night. They had actually got some shops along the area to actually sign up to the, to use their service that they're not able to pay for, but to make sure that the cardboard was tied, undid up out on the right times, is keeping it in the tidy.
Great. I raised this when we were talking about extending the service in Brighton, I think, but are there targets, do you have targets in mind with regards to the, to the number of people that respond to the survey and how many positive responses would be required for you to proceed with it? And a subsequent question to that, will it be broken down by commercial and residential respondents, so that if one or the other decide en masse that they don't want it, it's not to write it off for all the people in that area?
Through the chair, we've got that split of whether the question to be asked, whether they're a residential person or a commercial business. So we're doing businesses as well, because obviously some small businesses are taking, and there's some large ones, other than the malls and things who actually have divisions for, they're recycling for cardboard, which is obviously the biggie. But as far as costs and those sorts of things, we're trying to see what information they requirements are, so we haven't put any targets in for what would be the decision-making process of what it goes, that would be up to you guys.
So I'm just saying that our plan is to do the survey and then look at what's happening around the country and get the survey information back and then come back for the 15, 16 LTP consideration with some proposals. The message from council is pretty clear, you want us to come back with, how can we provide recycling services in the central business district, which would include commercial and residential? So part of the survey is to figure out, try and get better information of what's there, so that we can then try and design up something which comes back for consideration. And there'd be a process for that to be worked through, we wouldn't just come back for the annual plan. But that's our thinking at the moment.
With regards to the, to getting the survey out, how do you get around the issues of residential inhabitants of commercial buildings or mixed-use buildings or whatever, not having a post box or any receptacle with which to receive your survey?
They'll do posters.
We're doing posters and information, networking.
So just general, nothing targeted directly?
And we're doing, we'll go around doing a mail drop as much as we can for the places that just have a door down on the street sort of thing as well. And also making out with, obviously, the great start base that we've got access to.
I think part of the reason for the wider publicity as well is because there will inevitably be, given that we're talking about central activity area, people who do not actually reside or have businesses there who have some type of view around concerns of, in whatever, that that then also makes them aware, so that they can put their views forward as well.
I'd be delighted with the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor McCabbish, questions?
Just a couple. The first is 10.5 talks about business sector groups as one of the means of getting word out. Will you be tapping into networks like those of Dr Hazleton, who's been working with a lot of the business owners along George Street, warehouse precinct, Princess Street and another capacity?
If they're known to our planners, EDU and our commons people, then yes. Off the top of my head, I can't.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, Glenn's given us a lot of information.
Certainly, certainly. My other question is, it could, it could be that in the CBD, we have a fairly unique situation in terms of something like organic waste, and I wonder whether there is an intention within the survey to ask about organics as well as other types of waste, with an eye to making that information available potentially to a private provider or whoever that may be willing to do that service.
There is a national food waste survey coming out through Wastemans that we've contributed some funds towards, so that piece of work will come out eventually, but we haven't targeted that as part of this one.
Is there a possibility?
Unless there's a question in there, we've since refined this a wee bit more since we wrote this up, and I think there might be a question in there about food waste.
I just, the reason I asked is because it's not listed on 10.9 as the recycle, in the recycle list.
Yeah, I think we've included on a further elaboration of this information.
Yeah.
But I'll take a note of it to make sure anyway.
Yeah, it could just, maybe if I speak to this briefly now, then I don't have to speak to it again, but I, no, I will wait.
Thank you, councillor Zed.
Oh, no, I was just going to move the brick and mortar, see councillor Hawkins has it. While I don't get so excited about this issue, as he does, I'm going to take a second.
Wally, councillor Wally, sir.
Thank you. Do you see much use of the recycling bins in the street around the residential areas or where the residents reside?
That's particularly for the public places, so to try and recycle as much of the litter that we're seeing around the streets as well. So it's quite an opportunity that we follow on after the rolling issues that possibly with the litter and things that, so that's more for the people moving, coming into the area to have an opportunity to recycle their drink containers and things like that, if they're just in town.
But are you seeing any of the residents in some of the apartments?
At the moment, yes, there's some areas where they're using them at the moment, so that's all they're, they've got there to use. So we're not temping down on the same, they shall not use them while we don't have a full line of service available, it's an avenue that they can use.
Okay. And looking at the three options of Walklow, Wellington or Christchurch, is there one that's standing out, being more successful than the other?
They've all got their issues, so I'm going to say on the things and say I'm not too convinced on any of them just yet, so I'm sure Delene might be able to come up with a unique solution.
Or blending those chocolate?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Councillor Spence?
In terms of the survey, looking back on a couple of times, thinking Harborside in particular, where we surveyed building owners only later to realise that in fact the majority of building owners were not the business operators and were not the people that were going to be directly affected. So I'm just wondering what actions you're taking to try and identify the businesses as opposed to the business owners that need to be included in the survey?
That's why we're doing a mail drop, information drop to the businesses as much as we can, so that we're not just sitting back and using the building owners as the source of, supplying them with the information.
So in the warehouse district, you'll be trying to get, because some of them are multi-tenant, you'll be trying to get to all tenants.
And that wider publicity will also help, because there will inevitably be some that we don't get through that mechanism, the wider publicity will hopefully allow those people who go, oh, hang on, I didn't get a letter, to go looking and know where to find the information?
Yes, because we'll have online as well, so if they can't get the information, at least with the posters and things around the place, they'll have where they can go to the website to pull out the info.
You wish it meant?
Yeah, just picking up on that, do you, when you, do you build up a database that you keep for other purposes or for other staff's purposes further down the road? So you put out, it's very difficult to identify people cold, but once they respond, do you maintain a database that, say, two years down the track and there's another survey that's something completely different at a council, you've got at least some form of database of the resident attending businesses in that area?
We have a number of different avenues that we can explore, there's no one single source of that, but things like, and I know we've used them in different contexts before, things like the environmental health licences, the trade waste databases, things, the lists that Dr Hazleton will have for his interactions. So what tends to happen is it's a bit more organic of different places where you might get the information that you're looking for.
But I guess, well, in that case, I guess my question is, is the list of people that you will build up available to other departments a year down the track when they're doing something completely different, but may involve the same thing?
Yeah, we will be getting their information back to us, we're not just getting the sort of summary results, we'll be getting that database back, we've asked for that to come back to us.
But the lists of names and addresses would be? But the lists of names and addresses will be on a mail merge that we would be able to provide to anybody else?
That's true, we might be looking for it, yes, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we've got the normal questions, we've had the motion put, the mover, Aaron, do you want to speak to it?
No, wait.
Sorry, not put the, moved it, you wanted to speak to it?
Yeah, just really briefly, I just want to highlight the issue around organics and the reason why I'm so passionate about it. And I think the reason for it is, I think that we do have a really unique commercial situation in the CBD, which looks like a concentration of businesses that do produce a lot of food waste. And it could well be that through this process, we might identify that it is a potential resource for somebody, given its compact nature and the large amounts that come out, more so than a residential area where people have space and other means of dealing with things, and as such, the resource isn't as concentrated. So I think if we could collect that information through this survey, it may go well, may go a long way towards providing either a potential business startup or ourselves with the information that we might require to facilitate a service to be available just to our CBD, and I think that would be a really positive thing. Broader issue of this process being started, that's fantastic. I do have a little bit of concern with the short time period that the survey is meant to be out for, I think it's just over two weeks, something like that. It does seem like a short, particularly short timeframe for getting feedback. So I think we need to be working, for guns blazing, on getting the information out as quickly as possible to as many people as possible in order to ensure that we do get valuable feedback, so I think that is a concern. However, that aside, I am very supportive of this, it is very exciting, and I only hope that it can progress rapidly.
Write a reply?
Thank you, this is long overdue, as has been hinted by the previous speaker, and I for one am glad to see this underway. We say through our special plan and through various plans and strategies that we're trying to build a compact city, and that requires a degree of reurbanisation and downtown living. And we've seen some fantastic developments underway in that space, but it's something that I've struggled to encourage and champion until we have the infrastructure in place that services the people that are living in those areas, so that they no longer have to be stared at like they were hobos as they haul their recycled goods down to the nearest street corner and file them away as they are currently required to do, should they want their recyclables to be recycled. So I'm looking forward to seeing the results of this and seeing this work continued. And thank you to the staff for responding to my constant harassment over the past year to get us to this point, thank you.
Thank you, I'm going to put motion, all in place, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, Gary, thank you. Item eleven, Green Island landfill, new welcome back, still the same people, and three and ten minutes to this, I bet. Thank you, standing back, councillor Hall. Any questions, or do you want to speak to your report?
No.
You're wanting to move? Seconded, councillor McTavish, anyone want questions, sorry?
Yeah, thank you, I was, thanks for this report, and just wondered if you could elaborate, noting that that there is at least one operator, I think you said, who's withdrawn and now using private landfill. I'm just wondering to tell me about those companies that operate skips, and just how many of them you have utilised, continue to utilise, Green Island?
Out of about the, I think it's about six, six or seven skip operators in Dunedin, of which obviously Waste Management use their own facility based on. There would be probably two or three share there, things between both landfills. So there's actually no contracts to actually make them go to one or the other. So really, so there's only a couple that we don't see coming to our landfill. The operator that's gone to the other landfill still comes to ours for particular loads, certain types, so it's pick and choose.
And of those ten complaints about building charges, are any from those?
No, no, none of them from our customers.
From their private?
Yes, not general public.
Thank you.
Okay, now to the questions, do you want to speak to your question?
No, of course.
Do you want to interpret? I'm with, sorry?
All of, I just hope that we'll be looking at other solutions other than increasing the amount of waste that is going into our online landfill on the edge of history, but I'm sure that that is the case.
Now, did any write a reply? No, all of them, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, Gary, thank you very much. That gets us to the end of the public agenda, apart from notifications, Chair, but I do want to welcome our new property manager, Kevin Taylor. Welcome to the council, nice to have you here. Oh wait, you're not speaking today, I didn't care to listen to the next item, but nice to have you.